I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular meeting Moose Lake City Council for Wednesday, December 11, 2024 at 4:00 PM. And I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our guests tonight. We'll start with approval of the agendas. I have a couple additions to the agenda. This will be in new business. The first one will be I, and that will be poor Gary's parking. J will be street dedication. And K will be public works budget discussion. Also, I'm going to move one item up, and we have students here tonight. I'm going to move them up to right at the end of the departmental reports before we start I. This is 6:00 AM. I'm going to move that up before we do the previously discussed business. With that, do we have any other changes or discussion on the agenda? Very none. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda? Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to number two, consent agenda. This is 2A1. Regular city council meeting for November 13, 2024. Number two, special city council meeting, November 26, 2024. Do we have any discussion or questions on the minutes?
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under 2B, financial reports. Number one, city accounts payable for November 2024. Number two, city financial statements for November 2024. And number three, liquor store profit-loss statement for November 2024. Questions or discussion by the council?
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. I should state also, we do have one council member missing tonight, Chris Husso, just four minutes. Thank you. Number three is public comment. This time is reserved for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Now we'll move on to number four. Departmental reports for A, the Carlton County Sheriff's Office Activity Report for November 2024. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So our activity for November 2024 from the contract deputy, self-initiated activity, that's 17, extra patrol details, the traffic stops, along with 18 business checks, and one public assist around view. Followed up with 10 other calls for service and one assist other agency for a total of 55 calls handled by the contract deputy. The other county deputies had two extra patrol details within town, along with nine traffic stops, seven paper services, 17 Stone Guard patrols, and then 33 other calls for service were handled by county deputies throughout the month of November, for a total of 68 handled by the county deputies. Along with that, Sarah Radzak started in the halftime records position. So she is now in the office in town here. Her hours are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. She's working 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, filling that in town here. We are still progressing with our field training, with our two deputies that are in the training process. Everything is still showing on track for them to wrap up about the end of January. We're looking to add one more contract deputy in town here at that time. We will have to do another external posting, start another hiring process here shortly after the first day as well, to continue our process, to continue to add more deputies to our list. The other note that I have is we are set to install the fingerprint machine in the office down here. That's set to get installed next week, and then after we get some training on that, it's installed and working, we'll start taking, if we're able to do the public fingerprints back in the office down here again after that time.
So it looks like maybe February we'll get two more officers?
We'll get one more here, and then the way our schedule lays out, we've got Deputy Magis who's already working. Half of our schedule, we'll be able to put somebody on the other half of the schedule. So then we will have a deputy in town, at least one deputy in town per day. It might be a day shift or night shift depending on the schedule, but we'll have somebody in town, scheduled in town anyway, each day of the week then.
Great, thank you.
And then as we hire more, we'll fill those other two spots.
Appreciate that. Thanks for the update.
Absolutely.
That's a thank you on the officer. Good job.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4B, City Superintendent Phil Letner, department report for November 2024.
Mayor, members of the council, Administrator Owens, I guess I'd like to start by Mayor Shaw, thank you for your service. I know tonight's your last meeting. Worked under you for 14 years. So, thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you for your dedication to this community. So, water department, we'll start there. 5.3 million gallons of water distributed in the month of November. The three curb stops that were needed to be replaced in November were indeed replaced. They are in working order now. Water system is all winterized and ready for the winter operation. Sewer department, collection system collected 10.2 million gallons of wastewater in the month of November. Treatment facility, we are currently in the middle of our fourth discharge out there right now. We'll be wrapping that up at the end of this week. The street department, plows are ready, trucks are breaking down, but we're getting them fixed. We're just doing our thing. So it's good. We're pushing a little snow, throwing a little salt. Nobody wants it. It is what it is. It's life. It's expensive, but so it goes. Three-hour parking signage is up on 4th Street. The elm trees will be addressed soon. Cemeteries are shut down for the year, but there are still a couple of areas happening from time to time. The campground is shut down for the winter parks as well. The arena and the new compressors are best up and running. That's almost 10 hours a day, just about 10 hours a day, seven days a week. There's a lot of activity down there. That's all working well. Storm sewer, nothing going on there. Gardeners are shut down. Recycling center is back to its normal operating hours. So the extended hours are now gone. We're back to the 2:00 to 6:00 Mondays and Fridays, and 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays. So that's all I have for right now. There's a couple more things later, but any questions?
Got one.
Yes?
Are you scheduling a burn?
As soon as we get enough snow.
Okay.
So probably, probably February would be my guess.
Very good. Couldn't remember when it was.
As soon as we get enough snow typically.
Mayor Shaw, there will also be extended hours at the recycling services center for Christmas tree, holiday tree, drop-off.
I don't think we extended the hours.
Okay, well...
Did we?
Yeah. It's okay.
Okay, yeah, we did. I'm not sure. Call City Hall if we want to.
After the holiday season, we'll post it on the city website and the city Facebook if there's any modification to hours for the...
The Christmas tree recycling.
Correct.
But I didn't know any one hours. So that's okay. No problem. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Number C, municipal liquor store departmental report for number 2024, and 2024 liquor fund capital update.
Yes, members of the council, Mayor Shaw, Administrator Owens. Liquor store is doing great. In particular, month of November was really strong for us. We had revenue of 179, 451, 60, and previous year we did 165, 738, 09, for a difference in increase versus previous year of 13, 713, 51, and we spent quite a bit less. So in '24, November, we spent 126, 88, 554, and last year 158, 237, 88, for a difference of 31,003, 5234. So we made more. We spent quite a bit less, so everything's going great there. Also, in your packets, we have some invoices for some things we need to update down there. There's one from total register systems. That is for the point-of-sale systems that we have down there. They're really outdated. And then invoice from, or quote, from VC3, and that is for the workstations, the towers, the computers that are down there. Those two are really outdated. These items do fit in the capital item that we had for the liquor store, so there's $20,000 in there. We do have a thermostat that's going in, but that's roughly $2,700. So all of this fits very nicely in that capital line item. So looking for a motion to go ahead and move on these replacements.
Question from the council or action?
The point-of-sales, if I remember correctly, didn't we have an issue with transferring on the other point-of-sale systems? Is this the same type of point-of-sales or is it different?
It's a newer version, but it's the same system. So I guess I'm not familiar with problems in the past with that.
As long as we don't have a problem now. We did in the past.
Sure. As far as I know, this should be pretty seamless and easy.
Is there much training involved with?
No, no. The things for the upfront personnel will look the same, so.
Any motion by the council? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
All right, great news. We'll get cracking on that. It kind of follows into the IT portion too, the next part.
We need two separate motions. I think we need two motions. So that one was for the POS system.
For that and for the workstation council. This is a VC3 workstation replacement.
A motion to approve VC3.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Then moving on to 4D, technology library department IT monthly update.
Yeah, so working on this kind of stuff, just normal printer stuff and internet problems and just, it's always busy with that. I don't have a real update for you guys other than just little things coming in and out.
The library's got their 3D printer up and running, and it's going to cost 10 cents a gram for projects.
10 cents a gram.
How are they controlling that? Where is it in the building? It's going to be behind Laura's desk, and that's all. I mean, it won't be like...
Oh, in the open. They'll have to have permission from her to go in and use it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Moving on to 4E, the city engineer monthly update, December 6, 2024. These are the meeting minutes, highlights.
Absolutely. So the meeting minutes from the monthly engineering meeting are rather lengthy. They were six pages in totality, so we have a lot going on. I think a couple of things we'll handle later on in the agenda. What I did want to mention is that the MPCA implementation grant for wastewater resilience, the city requested $658,000 for that particular grant. That was submitted. SEH and myself, we've been checking the portal. We checked it yesterday. We should know at any point in time here whether or not we were successful with that particular grant application, so we'll make sure that council continues to receive an update on that. In addition, this past month, we applied for the sewer overflow and stormwater municipal grant through the MPCA. That award would happen shortly here, and so again, January's the timetable as far as notification for that grant award, so we'll continue to monitor that. And then at our most recent engineering meeting, we discussed a small community planning grant. We've not determined the city's approach yet of how we want to apply, but it's been identified as one that we are working with engineers in order to apply for. So in coming meetings, we will have more information to share. That one's, our application is due on January 17. That one is for 500, well, there's $500,000 in totality available, and so we are going to be strategic with our request from a city perspective. But we'll continue to work through those applications. Any other questions as far as any other engineering line items, please feel free to reach out. Otherwise, we'll continue to keep council updated on those meetings.
Any word at all on the $3 million application?
So I received a draft from the engineers on our state senate capital finance committee request. We are using a similar form. Those forms were just released and sent to the city by multiple entities, and so we're working through that particular application, and we'll have a submission to go back to the senate finance committee and with our local representatives. I know Representative Dotsef, his office has been asking for our application in addition to Senator Rarick's office, and so working with all parties and the cities and engineers to make sure that our project application is submitted and reviewed again.
Thank you. Council have any questions? Ryan, move on. Thank you. Under 4F, Chamber of Commerce update, monthly update.
Yes, the Chamber of Commerce is going through their annual budgeting process. They're also looking for interest in the chamber board and committees and volunteers for 2025. So if there is any interest, please feel free to reach out to the chamber. They've got a lot of planning going on currently for 2025 events, and so there's a lot of exciting things already in the works. As far as upcoming events, they have a calendar available on their website as well, and so all of that can be viewed by visiting.
I believe they have three empty seats that was discussed today.
Yes.
So if anyone on the council wishes to volunteer, that's possible. Just contact the chamber.
The annual membership drive is also underway, and the next chamber meeting will be January 8 at noon at Route 61.
Thank you. I did move up an item for us, and this is 6A, student council and National Honor Society, the Minnesota MASC/MATHS Fall Leadership Forum update. And we have some students here.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Ellingson. I am the NHS president of Moose Lake High School and a member of student council as well.
My name is Raven Larson Jr. I'm an NHS student council.
My name is Bradley Sikler, and I'm a dean at Moose Lake, and I'm the president of student council and as well on NHS as well.
So to begin today, we would like to talk about where it started. So we went to Craigens Resort, and we went through a whole bunch of different activities on our first day of our leadership forum. To begin, we kind of started out, so I'm just going to slide show right there. So we started out with some energizers and everything, which basically we just did some fun little like talking points and discussed different, what would you say, different ways to like pump yourself up and get excited to do something that may not be the most exciting thing to do, like sitting through a talk, which brings us to our next point, our keynote speaker, which was nothing near boring by any means. So our first keynote speaker, we had Mark. I don't remember his last name. His first name was Mark. And so he went through and discussed to us about how being a leader is being a home dealer, and we are dispensing hope and trying to lift people up and lift ourselves up in the process. And then we went through and we had a whole bunch of different activities throughout the thing. The school fair was when we got to go around and we got to discuss with other schools what was available and what they've been doing, and what we can possibly implement and kind of share what everything has been going on in the school.
Okay, so for our second day, it was just the morning time, but we started off with another energizer, and I believe that was just more like, just to get like moving mostly.
Yeah.
Our keynote speaker was...
Kate.
Kate. And she was someone who talked about self-image a lot and like how you're like, how you present yourself and what you can do to help yourself, even if you have the whole world telling you you can't do it. She talked a lot about just like some of her life stories and like her life experiences and like with just people putting her down and how she's still been able to persevere. And the next thing is there is another spring leadership conference at Hibbing High School for that weekend, for a weekend. Don't know for sure if we'll be attending, but that's just when the next conference is.
And then this brings us up to our, there, Mark Brown. That's his last name. And Kate Guards. We figured out the last names. Goodness. So basically, we already discussed all of that. That's on the slideshow.
So this goes to ideas for our school and how we're going to implement some of the things we learned in our school. So one of the things we talked about was this hot chocolate fisher. You basically just get a cup, and it's just like a hot chopper to go. So you get like the powder and like all the stuff for it. Just kind of like something we think about like with our Moose Lake Lake snow day stuff we do every winter. We just got a lot more like activity ideas. And this, one of my personal favorites would be our autograph day. So some of you guys who have grandkids and children at our school might know that they love, like look up to some of our varsity athletes at our school. I mean, they're pretty amazing kids, some of us. So what we thought we'd do is at lunchtimes, our elementary kids could come and meet some of our varsity athletes and get some signatures, maybe I can get some pictures of some of the kids that they really look up to.
So then to go with United Way, currently, we had, well, we just completed a hat and mitten drive, and for the hat and mitten drive, we collected actually a lot more than we were expecting. I don't know the exact number, but it was a pretty decent number. And so we donated everything to United Way, I believe, and so they've dispersed hat and mittens that we collected and throughout the state. And then currently, we are in the process of commencing, next week it'll actually be starting, a toy drive. This will not be donated to United Way. There's a, it's a wish foundation down in the cities that will also disperse toys and books throughout the state as well for Christmas. Besides that, I think that is basically it. Yeah, that's all. So one more slideshow.
Yeah, so just going back into some more of our community ideas, obviously the hat and mitten drive and toy drives are definitely through our community as well. Another thing where at late we have is our student council highway that we own. I believe NHS is also adopting a highway as well this spring, so we'll have two highway cleanups. We would love to branch out and work with our community more as, I mean, we're a student council and NHS, and obviously both those are very community-oriented organizations, so anytime, like any way we can help out in our community, we'd love to hear about it and do what we can.
Excellent. Thank you.
One suggestion. We used to have a Earth Day where the students in school would walk through the city and help clean up, in the spring on Earth Day, clean up all the stuff that got thrown out during the winter. Is that something you could bring to your group to consider again?
Yeah, yeah, we could definitely bring that to the group and consider it and see if we can figure out a better way to initiate that plan and make that thing happen.
It was organized years ago really well by one of the science teachers, but I think they may have moved on, so that kind of fell by the wayside, but that was something that drew great.
It's become more complicated because of our move out to 10. We used to do it with service learning too. I used to take the seniors and we would do the whole community, and it was really easy with the school being more in town. But now we have to bus all the kids in. That just creates a little bit more of an issue for the school.
Understandable, yeah. And that may have been what stopped it. I didn't think about that part, but yeah, I could see that. Unless it was done during the day, early part of the day, that's, I'll leave that in your capable hands to see what you can come up with. But thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You are welcome to stay or you can leave.
That one give up on you?
It just blew apart.
You're fidgeting too much.
There's only one shot across here. Sorry. Okay, moving back to number 5A, Resolution 24-11-02, a resolution rescinding previous conditional approval of wastewater treatment for the Moose Lake Windermere Sanitation Sewer Department. Administrator?
Yes, so I'll provide an update publicly here about what has transpired in the past couple weeks. I know I've had individual conversations with council, council members as administrator, but I will publicly provide an update. The city has received a response to our offer, our proposal to the Moose Lake Windermere Sanitary Sewer District. We received that on Friday, December 6, a little after 5:00. The city's city staff and negotiation team met with the city attorneys on Friday, the 6th, and again on Monday, the 9th. We actually have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow in my inbox that has not been accepted yet, but we're actively continuing to engage and review the proposals back and forth. Another thing that occurred is that the council is aware that the Sand Lake Resort has requested that the city approve 1,300 gallons per day of unconditional capacity, and so that is something that has been heavily discussed and reviewed. At this point in time, I can share that the city will be including 1,300 gallons per day for the Sand Lake Resort request in the city's counterproposal. The 1,300 gallons per day will be above and beyond the capacity that has been negotiated at this time. It'll be specific to that request made from Sand Lake Resort to the city. That counterproposal will be delivered to the district by week's end. I was told that it'll be delivered on Friday. At this point in time, the current resolution that has been tabled by council is for 5,000 gallons of capacity. This was conditionally approved. Since this resolution, or since the motion was made for the 5,000 gallons, a lot of negotiations have happened over time. The 5,000 gallons is actually not in alignment with the current mediation and negotiations for capacity. So what has been discussed heavily between both parties at this time is customer transfers, and then of course allotment and flow allotment would be modified based on customer transfers. And so we're working through that now. This 5,000 gallons of capacity is again not pertinent now to where we're at in mediation and where we're at in discussions with the district. And so what we've discussed... And so what we've discussed is rescinding the capacity. The city attorneys did draft the resolution for council to entertain, and so that is something that's on the table for the council at this point in time.
It kind of clears up some of the things that we initially started to move ahead with other initiatives in that negotiation. So council, any discussion or motion? Yes, sir, please come up to the podium.
Mark Lambert, Sand Lake Resort. I have had a few conversations with some counselors over the week, and I know Mayor Shaw, this is your last meeting or maybe last regular meeting, sounds like maybe a special or two yet to come, and I know you're working pretty hard on that. A couple of things, guys, I, I think I've told a few folks along the way that I'm your best friend whether you want me to be or not. I'm looking for a way to be part of a Sand Lake Resort. I continue to explore multiple pathways to accomplish this. The sewer board has been very, very difficult, and frankly, I'll call up the attorney, has been very difficult from the sewer district, in that even though you've granted me at the time this 5,000 resolution was done, you granted me 15 ERUs, which is what I needed. The attorney has made her own interpretation that she doesn't feel that that ERU included a capacity number, and therefore she feels that you're waiting to spring on them some default because of them granting me capacity. So what I came back with a couple of months ago was a negotiated reservation agreement with the district that said the first 1,300 gallons that comes goes right to our resort. And until that happens, nobody gets capacity. And that's what's in place today. So we're anxiously waiting for 1,300 gallons, the minute 1,300 gallons comes to the district, it springs into the resort, and I move on. And I will tell you, I've been at this two years, I won't tell you how many hundreds of thousands of dollars I've put in, I won't tell you how exhausted I am at this point in time for something so minute as 1,300 gallons. The resolution tonight for you was the 5,000 gallons that my engineers mistakenly thought we needed. So what you're about to do is repeal my capacity resolution. And I guess I would ask you one or two things before you do it tonight. Either number one, please give me my 1,300 unconditional gallons, it will immediately springboard into the district to give me the capacity to move on. It's more of a legal term, but it's what it is. And I have beat my head against the wall with the sewer board, I can't make any sense of it, but it is what it is. And frankly, I'm to you, and I think you have the same challenges trying to make sense of some of this stuff. And so what the attorneys now are asking you to do is to ping pong me back to the sewer board with a request for 1,300 gallons again. Not an unconditional grant, but now I'm going to be in the request again, I'm going to continue to bounce back and forth. So if, if the administrator and if the attorneys tonight are convinced that this has to happen, then I guess, I would first say, please discuss and see if you have a consensus to just grant me the 1,300 outright and be done. I don't think it's going to make a big difference in your negotiation, and I think for all the time that I patiently waited here, I'm hoping it gets us on our way. If that doesn't work, then I guess I would ask you to table this for yet another month, and let's have a discussion in January about this. I did speak with Ms. Huso, she's very supportive of us, so now we're down one vote if it's really going to come down to a vote. And I guess at a minimum, I would say either please give me 1,300 gallons, or please table this till next month. If you have a myoculpa with the district and can solve the 1,300 as, as the administrator suggests, great, then it's obviously for nothing. But I guess where I, I feel like I've got my dog in this fight is that this 5,000 was initially for me, and I understand it's no longer 5,000, but it's symbolic. And frankly, you're taking away that symbolism and you're sending me back to the district and I, I, I don't know that it's going to get us anywhere farther. I think I've shared with you, I've gone to the absolute stupidity of paying $5,000 for septic design on Sand Lake, and it's 15 units, and I can put it in, and I'm meeting with the guy tomorrow to get it finally approved. It would be the dumbest damn thing I've ever done, but I'm down to the point where I have no choice. So I'm either sewer district, I keep bumping my head there, I'm at the city, kind of bumping my head here tonight, or I'm the septic system, which is the dumbest damn thing that anybody has done in this community. So I guess what I would suggest is sometimes these types of things require leadership, and sometimes these type of things require that hope leadership that these young kids just talked about. I guess that's really where I'm kind of here tonight. How about some hope leadership tonight? How about keeping us on track? Because this revocation of this capacity number does, doesn't seem right. I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish we could tell you the rest of our plans because it's negotiations, we can't. This is part of a further plan that we can't discuss publicly because it is part of negotiations and mediation that we're in. Administrator, you want to add anything more?
I will. The council originally demonstrated support unilaterally for the project with the approval of the 15 connections. The city is not the utility provider for the Sand Lake Resort, so it, it, we are in this as part of the, as part of the process, but our direct relationship occurs with the district. Now, this is a community, but the project is important for the community as a whole. I think that that's widely, widely understood and widely appreciated. The city attorneys have been directed to incorporate the 1,300 gallons per day above and beyond our other negotiated flow allotment specifically for your request, and the district will receive that proposal this week. That is a, that is a, has been a directive given to the city attorney in order to incorporate that in, in the proposal. It's, it is important, and has been identified as important, and that is our, our next step.
There are other items in the negotiations that change the allotment, which we can't go into because we're tied to that negotiations. But believe me, we have all this in mind with what you're saying.
Broken out your requests, so.
I think it's also important to communicate that we have a, in order to complete the rest of our timelines, or to meet the rest of our timelines and complete this process by year end, we have pretty, pretty tight timelines that we need to meet here, which is why the, the district is receiving their, they've asked to receive their proposal next week, and we're going to shorten it up and then shorten up a timeline for a response. So we, we all need to know what direction to take here in the next coming weeks, so although it's not ideal, your patience is appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we have to say yes or no today, or do we, can we?
It's up to the council always.
Or we can say, we call a special meeting in two weeks and decide.
We have plans in place for that.
In other words, we could say wait.
I couldn't hear you.
So we, so we could say wait.
It's up to the council.
I could say, I could, I could propose to table it for now.
It's totally up to the council.
Before you do that, I would say.
As it, it's a question.
Yeah, and what I would say is my understanding of this process of rescinding would help their process. So if we rescind this, it helps the processes them getting the 1,300. Otherwise, we're going to be sitting with this proposal out there. If we take the proposal away, it's easier for us to make sure that they get the 1,300. So I would, I would.
That's why I'm going back.
I would be there to table it.
That's why I wanted it out there, but it's all over, so we have.
I, I think it's important that it's communicated that rescinding this helps, helps facilitate the second half of the process, which is the specific additional gallon per day allotment in our counter. That is the mindset behind this, it is not to make things more difficult.
I started my comment with you're my best friend whether I want you to be or not, so I'm going to trust you on this. So do what you got to do.
Thank you, Mark.
How are you?
This is on motion on Resolution 24-11-02.
You're looking for a motion to the recommendation to either rescind that or just to go with this resolution?
The resolution.
Approving the resolution.
Approve this resolution. Correct. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 24-11-02.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, thank you. There is a plan to this madness.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry it's taking so long.
Yep, appreciate it, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to 6B. This is a First National Bank of Moose Lake Riverside Arena sponsorship agreement.
Yeah, thanks for having me back up. We are thrilled, very pleased to present to you a potential sponsorship agreement between First National Bank of Moose Lake and the city of Moose Lake. Essentially, this is a naming rights agreement, there are other responsibilities in here from both parties. We've been meeting with Dan and Samantha, they are friends back there of First National Bank for several months, they've been excellent to work with, so really looking forward to this potential agreement and collaborating with them for the future. Essentially, it's for $150,000 for 10 years for the arena, of which the city would elect to take $60,000 upfront to make some improvements to the arena that need to be done, and then $10,000 per year thereafter for the term of the agreement. So I wonder if there are any initial questions for this, or Dan or Samantha, if you, either one of you would like to come up and say anything? You more than one of you?
Nothing like putting them on the spot.
Yeah, sorry.
No, I, I just had a couple of comments. You know, being a community bank here in Moose Lake, that is part of, you know, what we do, we give back to the community and invest in our communities, so, and this is one of those times we really appreciate, you know, your guys' support of us and allowing us to work with you through this process, and thank you very much. We're really excited for this opportunity, so.
Yeah, I think, we're excited for that opportunity, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
The agreement was reviewed by the park board, so it did go through the park board. Another notable piece is that the agreement does highlight a park board, Parks and Rec Board appointment for First National Bank. You'll see that on the annual appointments, that will be reviewed first tonight, and, and then again, formal approval in January. So those are some of the points that have been being discussed. In addition, there is talks about signage and things like that, so the city has been coordinating with First National Bank regarding the exterior sign and the digital, so that will all be worked out in a collective manner. I just want to reiterate, Dan and Samantha have been fantastic, Ryan has taken the lead on this agreement, and everybody's done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions under a motion?
Motion to approve the sponsorship agreement with First National Bank in Moose Lake.
Do I have a second? Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, you're welcome to stay or, or leave if you wish. Moving on, this is C, General Records Resolution Schedule for Minnesota Cities.
Well, yes, so throughout the course of 2024, we've worked with the city attorneys regarding the Minnesota Data Practices Act and public data requests, and through some of that work, we, we've had to review our retention schedule. Our retention schedule had not been updated in, in some time, and so there was a recommendation made by the city's attorney in order to adopt a, a newer version of our retention schedule. The one that was presented to council via email is the General Records Retention Schedule for Minnesota Cities. This is the one that was recommended to the city by the city attorney. It's actually the same one we have now, as far as form and version and where we, where we got it, but the new one is, is updated. So looking for a motion from council to adopt the revised and renewed General Records Retention Schedule for Minnesota Cities.
Counsel?
Make the motion to adopt the new Records Retention Schedule for Minnesota Cities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Carry none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, thank you. We're down to D, 2025 Annual Appointments Discussion. I think we had a correction that Chris wanted to, to change? And which one was that?
So I was contacted by Councilor Huso regarding the appointment for the Minnesota Department of Corrections Advisory Committee, and so the request from Councilor Huso was to either, you know, swap out with another city councillor and/or just be removed from that particular committee appointment.
Right now, we have Doug Lewis on that. Jim? Are you interested in that?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. So you have that, Tom.
If there's any other questions or, you know, further discussion, you know, I know Mayor Shaw put a lot of time and, and energy and effort and thought into this. Formal approval will happen in January, so if there's any additional dialogue that needs to occur between now or then, this will not be formally approved for a few weeks yet.
It gives you guys a chance to look these over, talk to each other if you, if you wish to try, but please coordinate with administrators so that we have, we're trying to do an equal number of committees per councillor, and putting a couple of councillors on committees that we can, we've kind of got away from that through the last, I don't know, number of years, so I'm trying to balance that back out. There are some of these that are controlled by ordinance, the number that you can have on them, so with some of those, we have one. Or like, say with the fire district, the contract that we have, operational with that allows only one voting council member, so it doesn't make sense to put another one on that can't vote, they would just be present there. We do have a community member, John.
Lund.
Lund. John Lund on the committee, and I believe, Jim, you are the secretary for the department, not for city, so Jim will also be at those meetings. We may have one other one like that, and that is the library board. I believe that has by ordinance, so that's something we'll have to look at, because we have Chris and Walter on that. If we're good with the contract, that's when we should check, otherwise I think the rest will be fine. We should get a copy of this to Jim for his review also.
I had thought about giving out an electronic document to hold forward.
Let's see, what page is that on? Okay, right now I have Doug, and Jim assigned to that, so if you, I can't put you on because that would be a quorum, and then you'd have to call us, there's a special meeting. It doesn't preclude you from going to it, but you have to notify everybody. It doesn't preclude you from going to it, but you have to notify everybody that you're coming. And when you do it that way, you can't speak. So I don't know if it does you any good. Now, it's up to you to talk to these other two members that are on it to see if you can trade with them. I'm going to leave that up to you council members to do that. I've assigned everybody two of these, and then from there, you go, you guys, it's up to you. Whatever you do, they'll coordinate with the city administrator.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One thing I'd like to ask is that when we're looking at citizen representation, I would like to see when it comes open that we actually post it and give people the opportunity. I mean, some of these ones, you know, someone can be on there for 20 years. And I think that having new idea, new representation certainly doesn't hurt.
And we talked about that. Any openings will be posted. Some of these boards by ordinance have have a date that, I don't know if it's like three terms. And each term maybe two years, a few years. That has to be followed also. So thank you. Yes, sir.
Does it have to wait until it turns itself to be posted? Or ask if there's anybody interested? Or can it be?
We normally...
Or can it be just out that it's advertisement every year that there's anybody interested in?
Usually, if there's no term, we ask them if they're interested. If there's a term, they're on there for, put the term.
I know, but is there any type of, have we advertised anything? Is there any interest in the city? Or any volunteer from anybody in the city for any input into the city, for any input to the city, for help with the city? Ideas or anything else?
That'd be up to you guys. Well, you're going to be up.
I'll be gone.
Almost every year, though, there's a rollover in one of these. So I think what you're saying is that even though someone can be on there three terms.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying a generalization, asking people on it. That basically, is anybody interested?
Changing what's...
Putting their two cents into how the city should be.
You know, that's when, that's when you do your long-term, short-term planning, and you have community input. That's when that would happen. Like strategic planning. And I have suggested that the city do a new strategic planning because the last one that was done was, was it 2014 that I pulled those old documents out?
2014.
So you're getting, the city should be, you have 10 years now. So it's probably something that the new council and administrator should talk about doing a new strategic planning. And there's resources out there that help in that process. It's showing my age. Arrowhead. Regional.
You're not going to hold it.
Trying to think of the name of it.
ARDC.
ARDC, yes, on to Duluth. They have the main option Duluth. They do come down and help in that process. Normally, no expense to the cities in our area. And they help do a whole strategic planning. And you pull in community members and you go through a process. And the one we have is very good, but it should be looked at and updated. And there may be new ideas. And this is when something like what you stated should be brought up. So thank you. I don't know if that answered or helped or...
Yeah, because I think that's basically, yeah, never mind.
Yeah. But it is a good document and it's something that should be kept up to date. And when you do development, you look at it. Like it has in there things like like lighting systems in the new development. The type of downward locations, you know, things like that. Boulevards. Trees. Don't cut trees. No, I'm just kidding. Things like that. But yes. Very good, though. Thank you.
Mayor Shaw, do we need approval to post the board vacancies?
Yes.
So there is a need. There are some vacancies. And without a desire for reappointment from board members on multiple committees. And so there will be a post that goes out regarding the cemetery board and the planning commission specifically. And so looking for council approval to post those vacancies.
So do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Any other questions on the 2025 Annual Appointment Discussion? And again, Jim will get you a copy of this. You can look at it.
He's got it. He's good.
He does?
Yeah.
Great. All right, moving on to 6E, Local Auctions Sales and Use Tax Agreement.
Oh, yes, the council received a new local sales and tax agreement. This is an annual process that we go through from a city perspective. There was a modification as far as the administrative fee is concerned, but that is not something that the city has control over. The Minnesota Department of Revenue will collect a flat rate of 1% for administrative fees.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to 6F, Resolution 24-12-01. The resolution making the discussion to not order a, excuse me, discretionary state environment assessment worksheet, EAW, for the proposed Trunk Highway 73 Trail Phase Two project.
Oh, yeah, so I included an email from city engineer with SEH regarding the resolution provided to council. So essentially, because of the environmental pre-work that has already been completed with the project memorandum, and now that there has been a response from all agencies, this resolution essentially negates having to complete an EAW for the project. So looking for council approval. This process also occurred with the Phase One of the trail project as well. So this is the second time that the city will be engaging in this particular aspect of the project.
Counsel, questions or a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Mayor Shaw?
It's probably the last motion I will ever make.
Want to make another one? I think I need one on the sales tax agreement.
Which was right above it. 6E Local Auction Sales Tax Use Tax Agreement.
Correct.
You have a motion? So do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Dan asked for the vote. I did. Okay. Moving on to 6G, Short Elliott Tendrickson Incorporated Supplemental Letter Agreement. This is the 73 Trail Project.
Yes, so council had visibility to the additional supplemental letter agreement. This is for design fees for engineering for the Trunk Highway 73 Trail Phase Two project. So as design has continued to progress, you spend additional work that's been needed to finalize design. We've done a lot with easements and right-of-way and working with the state entities based on where the trail is going. And so we have gone over the initial designation in the original supplemental letter agreement for design. And so this fee is an amendment. It's for $57,525. And so looking for council approval on this particular supplemental letter agreement for the trail.
And this is covered in the grant money?
So what the letter that was included is stating is some of the work there, considering it out of scope. So based on the extensive survey research, based on the preparation of all the easement documents with all the state entities, alternate route investigation, additional field work, things like that. They've gone over what is covered by our grant money. So we have engineering fees in our budget to cover this. We budget for engineering fees on an annual basis. This letter is communicating that this is above and beyond what we can get reimbursed for. For these trail projects, the intent is always to have the entire $750,000 covered by, for design and construction, covered by the grant money. There's always a little bit of city match. It usually comes in the form of engineering fees. And that is why we budget for them on an annual basis. This is in our budget, but it is not, it is over and above reimbursable grant monies.
Counsel? Discussion or motion?
Motion to approve the payment of $57,525.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. That brings us to... We had B, C down here.
What's going on there?
Should be H.
I've never seen that before. I apologize. I don't know.
Did Ryan help you? No, I didn't. Let's do a correction now. That's supposed to be H. The next one is I. J. K. L. M.
And M. Thank you.
Okay. I saw that before. I was just testing all of you to see if you guys recognize. Okay, I totally forgot where it was.
H.
temporary.
Yes. All right, Moose Lake Brewing Company Temporary On-Sale Liquor License Ice Bocce, January 25th, 2025. Looking for a motion by the council.
So Moose Lake Brewing Company will be taking over Ice Bocce. This was formerly a chamber event, ran for post-prom. And so the Moose Lake Brewing Company is looking to facilitate the event for the first time this year. This is the temporary on-sale liquor license. And they're discussing donating funds from this event to a local community organization. And so I will announce that once it's been officially approved. But it's really exciting, great event, and this is for their on-sale liquor license.
Counsel, approve. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to I, Moose Lake Brewing Company Temporary On-Sale Liquor License Ice Fishing Contest, February 15th, 2025.
This event has occurred before. It's been a wild success. Again, the event is for February 15th, and this is the temporary on-sale liquor license.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried.
Moving on to J, 2024 Police Department Budget Discussion, the A, 2024 Law Enforcement Services Agreement Invoice.
Yes, so we'll need formal approval on the law enforcement services agreement invoice. That invoice is for $73,228.60. This is the invoice for services through the end of 2024. The items, this is for wages. The items that haven't been included in this are, on the initial proposal to the city, there were line items for vehicles and equipment and things of that nature. That outfitting is still occurring at this time, so those will be on the 2025 invoice. So this invoice essentially covers the remainder of 2024 at a prorated amount based on start date for the three, two deputies and administrative staff member that are itemized on the invoice from December 6th.
Counsel, discussion or a motion?
So we're at least a couple hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollars less that we spent.
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion with council regarding that. We want to approve the invoice.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the invoice of $73,228.60.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. So in the packet was also our expenditure budget worksheet. This was the worksheet that takes us through November. And so on the second page at the bottom, there's itemized out the original 2024 budget for law enforcement was $687,850. Our current expenditures are at $391,807. If you also take into account the law enforcement services invoice that was just paid, there is a savings of $222,813 at this time. There will be some additional expenses that occur throughout the month of December. So I do want to throw out that the final savings may be closer to the $200,000 mark. The city council has asked administrative staff to kind of assess the budget throughout the course of the year. At this point in time, we've kind of wrapped up our assessment based on receiving that final invoice from Carlton County for law enforcement services. So this is the remaining balance that has been inquired about from council.
All right, so who looking for a motion?
Not a motion, just any discussion. I know there's been questions about, from to city administration about what to do with those funds or what will happen to those funds. And so I would just be wanting direction from a council perspective as far as prioritization of what the council wants to see happen.
I'll open up for discussion, but I'm going to speak first. I would hope we would put it back into this, the budget for the police department so that you're kind of ahead of the game going into 2025. With that, I'll open it up for any questions or discussion or suggestions by the council.
I would say that we already have a budget amount that is then consistent in the police department, whether that's been through contracting or not. This is funds above and beyond and the purpose of having, going to contracted services, save money for other departments in the city that were neglected. And we are looking at a gravel pit. We're looking at other needs that we have. And why would we go above and beyond, in my mind, of law enforcement? We already have that coverage that's being covered underneath the budget that we have if I'm understanding that our budget is still the same for contracted services for, for debt needs.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to see this money go towards the gravel pit. And if not towards the gravel pit, towards other infrastructure projects. But I would prefer to see it go towards the gravel pit.
Greg?
Well, there's no problem of finding where to put that money. The city needs help in so many different directions. So I don't think we should necessarily be looking where to spend it because there's too many places to spend it. So on, off the January 15th, you'll have 10 places to spend it. So I wouldn't worry about it till the middle of January.
Administrator?
A couple of things. So I know we talked about the gravel pit. The gravel pit has the ability to generate savings for the city. And so if you're looking at a 30% cost savings on every single road project, for example, trail projects, road projects, other types of city projects, the residential development, whatever it looks like. If you're looking at a resource that the city can utilize to cut costs in other areas, putting money towards that could be beneficial to reduce timelines for other city improvements as far as infrastructure is concerned. There's always a place that money can go. And so it is rare that you come across opportunities to redirect money within the city budget. And so it is rare that you come across opportunities to redirect money within the city budget because there's not generally an opportunity to redirect. There's, everything runs pretty tight. So internally, we've had discussions about the benefits of a gravel pit. And so if that's the direction council wants to go, then the prioritization of that, essentially the monies would then be earmarked for the gravel pit, moved, and then, you know, the city could then engage on moving forward with that. And there wouldn't be a need to continue to take money out of the general fund to save for the gravel pit if it's going to be funded with the shit.
What is the total amount again that can be dedicated or moved?
So the reason why I wanted to have a public works budget discussion as well is because it kind of goes hand in hand. So there were money set aside in capital in public works for a new dump truck and a new pickup truck. Neither one of those occurred. Superintendent Etner looked for a new dump truck throughout the course of the year and did not find a good deal. We're coming down to December now. And so there's an opportunity to direct money from the public works capital and from the law enforcement department to essentially fund the need for the gravel pit that we're aware of at this time. And so it looks like in totality, there's around 300,000. And so it would be 200,000 from the police department budget and then 130 from capital within the public works budget. And those discussions are, I know that that's further on on the agenda, but they're actually aligned.
I'll make another suggestion. Can that money or part of it be put into the sewer which we know we are trying to straighten out? And get a handle of? Which may help us in the long run.
That is totally the council.
I want to hear Phil. Could you come up to the podium?
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember, he said he did a great job, Mayor.
I did. I did. What was the question?
If the idea of that money, 300,000, moved into the sewer fund, which we know that we are trying to stabilize.
Okay, so we can fix the sewer fund immediately if we're willing to pay the rates to make the utility break even. I've been preaching that for five or six years, and we've ran it at effusism purpose. The water can do the same thing.
My idea is to help the strategic plan to get to that magic numbers.
What would be your thought process behind that? How would you want to do that?
You just transfer the money in, and you look at that as a tool. I think you probably know where I'm going with that without getting into negotiation talks.
So the enterprise funds, our proprietary funds are designed to be self-sufficient by process. You know, but we're not, we're not moving monies from general fund into our proprietary funds. That's not standard practice. That's not something that we engage in. Like the idea of having the proprietary funds or the enterprise funds, utility funds are so that they are self-sufficient. I understand where Mayor Shaw is going because we have a huge math problem we're working in the background and through mediation and through negotiations. But our utility funds should be operating independently and should be self-sufficient of one another versus general fund monies that is directly related to taxation and/or local government aid helping the general fund or bringing in other sources of cost savings or revenue for the city.
Yes, sir.
Except that it was tax money that started it all, that got us into that.
You have, there's many, many reasons.
Well, I know that, but as far as sewer water and whatnot, it was tax dollars that got it started. Had to pay for it to start with. So, I mean, the point is, do you want to try and cut that end of it down and see what can then, what, where do you want to, where do you want to put A and D? That's all. Which way? In other words, you're asking him if he cut, if, if he takes some paid off his so-called sewer bond down, what that came down to zero, what would it be? You're asking him another question.
That's more than that. It's more complicated than that. It goes into the negotiations and how much we're charging citizens and how much we're charging other elements. And I'm just trying to see if you do a one-time addition, if that can get us through till when? Probably 2032?
My worry with that would be exactly with what happened with the settlement from the state. And it got us to a point where we had a surplus in the fund, and then it became acceptable to operate a utility at a loss to burn down that fund and not increase rates and make the utility self-sustaining. That would be my worry about doing that.
Yeah, and that's why you do a strategic plan. Now, the reason I bring this out so that you guys have heard every option that I can think of. I can't think of any other ones, but to me, that's my job, that you guys hear all the options, make an educated decision, and that's where it goes. Doesn't mean that I agree with anything that I said where it could go. I wanted you guys to be well-educated on what you do with it.
This was an exercise.
Because once it's done, then it's done. So, thank you, Phil. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
But I wanted to hit that out. All right, so we have some options. If you heard them all, I can't think of any other ones. Counsel? Decision?
Do you want dollar amounts or what?
So it would be dollar amounts, and it would be separate assessment between the police department budget and the public works budget.
The 200, 100? Make a motion to take the 200K from the unused police department budget and 100K from unused public works budget and put it towards the gravel pit completion. So that will become the enterprise fund, making the citizens money or city money.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Greg?
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carried. All right. Moving on, that was, let's see the correction to react. K?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Poor Gary's Parking, I'm going to ask. Representative that brought that forward, their city council member?
Oh, it was discussed that possibly to take care of the Poor Gary's parking issue, that the city could give out a sign or a sticker or something of that nature that could go on to their delivery vehicles that would be able to be moved from vehicle, vehicle as needed to take care of their problem with parking issue all the time on the street in front of their business there.
Maybe something like a flathead that can take out of the back window and give it to the next person. Where do you?
Yeah, something along that lines, yes.
Counsel?
I think we'd have to ask our law enforcement representation because they literally cannot go against the law. If we do not have it somewhere that states it's okay for them to do that, this isn't a handicap accessible thing. So I think that would be more direction. I don't know if you can give that direction. Because I'm scratching my head.
If you have any ideas.
I guess I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the background on this to know exactly what they're asking necessarily.
Okay, on the elm and on fourth, we, the council decided to do a three-hour parking limit. Poor Gary's who delivers pizzas. In other words, in every three hours, you got to move your vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, so we're asking is that if, like, a little sign can be put in their back window that gives them their delivery for Poor Gary's, and they don't have to move that vehicle in three hours, after three hours? In other words, maybe it's five hours before they have to do a run to deliver.
Okay, so we're talking about a city ordinance that is governing this. So we're not talking about a state law. We're talking about a city ordinance.
Right.
So then, I'm not an attorney, but I would think that you could write your ordinance with that caveat in it, however you wanted to designate that. Because ultimately, you're the ones enforcing your ordinance. Whether or not we're the vehicle to enforce that ordinance would be kind of the next question. But ultimately, you as the city are enforcing your ordinance. It's how you want to do that and how your city attorney would want to do that, or whatever's enforcing it.
Thank you. Very good.
Yep.
Counsel?
I would say you could try whatever you want. Just keep in mind that now you're going to open a Pandora's box, and you're going to have other businesses doing the same thing and taking away from what we're purposely trying to do. I mean, I think it'd be easier just to tell whoever's working that let's try to give them a little attitude for Poor Gary's that their vehicle out there, just move forward with it.
Any other comments by anyone? Or motion? Any council member? What exactly were you saying there?
I'm just saying that if we have the understanding that, hey, this is their business, they're pulling in their parking, I don't see us eating things very hard.
First of all, if he goes and delivers a pizza, he's gone. He can come back and park. He's got three hours before he has to move again. So in other words, he only has to do two deliveries a day, and he's got six hours.
And he not have his first delivery till after six hours? Yes, sir. Yes.
For an administration standpoint, I have concerns in my role that things aren't facilitated in an equitable way. It concerns me that if there is an exception made for one business, then the council would need to review exceptions for other businesses in order for it to be an equitable approach. That is a concern of mine, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Question?
To allow, to allow a sign in the back of their vehicle or whatever to allow them to park for longer than three hours because they're a delivery vehicle. And it's part of their business practice.
I had a question. I wouldn't ready to give, leave every business down the street to give one, add one sign for each one of them?
I don't know. It'll be up to the council. Not up to me.
I'm going that way, too.
I'm going to make a motion that we allow that for Poor Gary's, one flathead. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say no.
No.
Aye.
We have a time vote, so it fails. So we'll move on to the next item. Thank you. Let's see, that brings us to... Is it J? Okay, this is street dedication. I shouldn't, I should say a drive dedication. And I'm going to dedicate this drive. This is between the hockey arena, the Essentia, I guess their workout. I'll call it that, the building that they have. And I want to designate as the Jeff Fatoric Drive. And the reason I'm doing that is because he was very instrumental in bringing hockey to Moose Lake back in the early seventies. There was hockey here way before that, actually, when there were high school teams in the fifties. I don't know who's around here that can remember that except for me. Greg, you, did you play?
1954 was the last year of Moose Lake had a high school team.
You played on it?
No.
Oh, you did. But I do remember watching the games, and it disappeared for a number of years. And when Jeff moved into this area, he was very instrumental in starting up the hockey program again, which has been very successful for both girls and boys and the varsity teens. Literally hundreds of students have participated in this program for, I guess, 50-some years, a little bit more than that. So that's why I'm dedicating that road to Jeff Fatoric. It's not a, it is a drive.
It's on this map here?
Yes, there is a, there is a map where you guys can see it. It's this one right here coming in.
Okay.
Here's, it's a very short drive. It's the north entrance.
North entrance to the hockey arena.
To the arena.
Yep.
And that used to be where they entered in, where the dropping off, whatever.
Recycling. Whatever. Recycling, yeah.
Correct. Recycling. So we'll move on. This is a public works budget discussion. K?
So that already occurred with?
You're happy with all of it?
Yes, and I just wanted counsel to have this ability that there was a change on the capital items that were previously budgeted in 2024 for the public works department. 50,000 of that was originally going to be for the gravel pit. But the other monies, as far as the dump truck is concerned and the pickup truck, those items did not get purchased. And so we will move $100,000 of that capital money. Instead of just 50, we will move 100,000 of it to the gravel pit in addition to the 200,000, based on council motion tonight.
All right, even need any more action, let's just sit. We have a truth and taxation hearing that'll start at 6:00 P.M. So we will go into recess until that starts.
Do you want to do any of the?
So I'm going to, that's exactly. So I'm going to go on to eight, nine, and 10 and complete those. And we're going to recess until 6 o'clock. So moving on to eight. This is reports and correspondence, eight, Ave, Flaherty and Hood, 2024, legal service rate negotiations, excuse me, notification.
Yes, and that, that should be 2025. So I just wanted counsel to have this ability to 2025's rate for Flaherty and Hood. Counsel receives this notification on an annual basis.
Anyone any discussion on that anymore? Moving on to A, DLC, DHS Citizens Advisory Committee Meeting Event. This for your calendar, Jim. January 23rd and 2025. Normally, it starts at? Normally it starts at seven in the morning.
I have been asked RSVP for the city, so I did let them know that I'm going. You'll be there as well. And then Doug, you're also on the committee. Should I RSVP for you as well?
Yes, please.
Moving on to eight C, Moose Lake Star Gazette 2025 Official Newspaper Bid Letter.
This is the annual bid request from the Star Gazette for the city of Moose Lake. No additional action is needed. I wanted counsel to have visibility to this and then they are listed on our annual appointments document and so final approval would happen in January.
Moving on to eight D, Arrowhead Transit 2025 Fair Changes.
This is simply a for your information regarding Arrowhead Transit Fairs and adjustments for 2025.
And that also will be approved in the reorganization meeting. Moving on to eight E, Moose Lake Area Chamber of Commerce 2025 Annual Meeting and Dinner Invitation.
This is just simply for council's information.
It's a very good meeting and if you, it's fun and you meet a lot of people and interact for a good time. Down to nine, Committee and Board Meeting Minutes. We have nine A, the Moose Lake Area Fire Protection District Meeting Minutes for November 2024. Any discussion or notes you want to mention, highlights of anything? Under announcements, did we put in the announcement for the special council meeting?
We did not because I didn't have a specific date time, so I didn't want to discuss that tonight.
So I would like to, if you guys can pull out your calendars for January. You need to do a special council meeting to swear in the new mayor and the new council members. And you should do that the first week in January, either the second or the third, I would suggest.
Check and see if Jim, any council's available.
I should be good in emails.
I couldn't hear you, Jim.
I'll be good in emails.
Okay. Then we should contact Ole also.
Okay.
The, so would be January 2nd, a Thursday, acceptable?
Okay, I will reach out to them as well.
Okay.
And then I can send out an email for formal verification.
And at that time, you do the swearing. Doug, you would run the meeting as the mayor pro temp.
Okay.
Alyssa, you do the swearing in.
Okay.
And after the officers are sworn in, or I should say mayor and the council member, then you do all the committee approvals and the different business aspects like Star Gazette and the law firm and so forth. And those should be the only items on the agenda unless there's something critical. It should be just a reorganization or meeting and then you have your normal one the second Wednesday.
Thank you, Mayor Shaw.
That was January 3rd?
Second.
Second, which is a Thursday.
Is this how we've always done it?
Your, the difference is you have a new mayor.
Yep.
When you didn't, you could do the council members at the normal meeting, but you go into the mayor, that, that should be done right away within the first week.
What, what time?
She's going to send out a?
Yep, we got to coordinate a little bit.
All right, announcements. Moose Lake City Council Regime Meeting Wednesday, January 8th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. Moose Lake City Council Board Chambers. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority, Wednesday, December 18th at 12:00 PM in the City Conference Room. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission, Tuesday, December 17, 24 at 1:00 PM at the Water and Light Office. Moose Lake Housing and Development Authority Board, Monday, January 13th, 11:00 AM at the Hillside Member Office. Moose Lake Area Fire District Protection, Tuesday, January 14th at 6:30 PM, Emergency Response Center and the Moose Lake Park and Recreation Board. Monday, January 6th at 5:00 PM, right here in the Chamber, Council Chambers. That brings us back to the truth and taxation public hearing and like a motion to go into recess until 6:00 PM. So do you have a second?
I'll make a jump.
A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. One other, one other item before we go into recess.
Uh-oh, last meeting, he's going to pardon someone.
I want to, I want to thank the citizens of Moose Lake for, for honoring me for these past 20 years, for the honor of serving them. And to all the chamber members and all the different boards that I've served on, I greatly appreciate all the stuff that all have done for the city of Moose Lake. The different council members that I've worked with and different city administrators, a thank you to them for honoring to serve them also. The city staff that we have right now is a very good, strong staff and I appreciate the work that all of you are doing and have done for us. It made my job very easy. Thank you. And to the current council, you guys have done a great job and I know you're stepping away also great and thank you for your service. But it truly has been an honor for me to serve this whole community. I love Moose Lake. I love living here and, and to me, I appreciate the offer that I've had the opportunity. So thank you all very much. So we're in recess.
Thank you, Ted. It's been an honor to serve you.
Thank you.